Seven o'clock, so we're gonna get started. Thank you all for coming. Just before we get started, this is our Grafton Select Board with Ray Mead down the end, Colleen Roy, Annie Jefferson, and Amberie Foley. This is William Blake, I forgot your last name for a second there. The Assistant Town Administrator, and I'm the Town Administrator Evan Rassard. Also with us today are folks from Grafton Upton Railroad and the Federal Railroad Administration. Not an association, an administration. So what we're gonna do first, we're gonna go through a very brief slideshow that just kind of recaps everything that the town and railroad and residents have gone over going back to 2019. Just real brief, and then we will move on to kind of your feedback and question and answer section. It's not that bad, you don't have to quit early. Okay. So the goals for this evening are threefold. One, we want to review the previous discussions. We want to review any updates, which there really aren't any as far as in this presentation. And then we want to discuss concerns or your feedback on what we discussed. So going back to July 2019, Mr. Malinowski, who's here with us this evening from Grafton Upton Railroad, presented options to rework the intersection of Route 40, Waterville Street, and E Street. We've also posted this, or we will post this presentation online, and you can click on that little red link and it'll bring you to the video recording of that meeting back in 2019. In October 2019, Mr. Malinowski returned again with a comprehensive update and presented options for redoing the intersection of Route 140, Waterville Street, and E Street, and that was based upon a traffic study and engineering design done at the time. In November 2019, the Select Board toured Grafton Upton Railroad as well as the site. And in December 2019, the Select Board hosted a public outreach session with Grafton Upton Railroad, almost identical to what we're doing here this evening. So there were three options presented at that meeting, and that meeting goes into a lot more detail than we're gonna go into here tonight, we're gonna kind of give an overview. So the existing condition, as well as Option A, improves the intersection because we would be able to optimize the signal timing, and decreased delay is, the delay is, ah geez, decreasing delay is limited without implementing actual improvements to the infrastructure, so geometric improvements through that section. Alternative B was presented as they would add a southbound left turn lane onto North Main Street. It reduces traffic during the active railroad crossing by providing space for the cars to queue. So it's basically, you all know, you get to the intersection, everybody's lined up, this gives you another section to pull off into if you're gonna be making that turn. And then Alternative C is the removal of the signal phase service in E Street. E Street would then become a one-way from the intersection down to Prospect, I believe, and has the greatest reduction in vehicle delay, but would also have the biggest impact in traffic patterns. So all of this is to establish or review a quiet zone. So the establishment of a quiet zone limits the use of horns to emergency situations, and they would only be used for emergency situations or to comply with other federal regulations. The preliminary engineering shows that only Alternative C would adequately support the formation of a quiet zone. And so next steps, and then we're gonna put C back up for discussion. For any action to occur, the Select Board needs to decide if they want to pursue any of the listed alternatives or a separate solution. So the Board did already vote on a separate solution, which we have paused while we continue this conversation about the quiet zone. If a decision's made, Grafton Upton Railroad and the town will be able to work together and make changes and pursue grant opportunities that are mutually beneficial. So we'll throw C back up just for the purposes of discussion, and I think the Board will probably come back up and take your feedback.
Can you announce the decision that was made by the constituents in 2019 on all three options?
At North Grafton Elementary School.
At North Grafton Elementary School? What was the decision?
So I believe the decision was to not pursue Option C.
Or B.
Right.
We kept the A.
Yep.
Thank you. Who paid for the study? Did the town pay or did the railroad pay?
No, the railroad paid.
Yep.
So it skewed in their favor.
Of course.
Well, it's a traffic study, so I don't think we're gonna find any other...
Yeah, please, please, they're looking out for our best answers, my fanny.
But I asked the question, I...
And was it...
So, so, go ahead, sorry.
Was there a decision made by the Select Board? You alluded to that.
So it essentially follows Decision A.
What did that date was? At what meeting?
I don't have the date in front of me, it was six or eight months ago.
And it was a posted agenda item?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so Paul Conoyer, our DPW Director had come in and had explained kind of that option at the time and the design that we had from our engineer, which is PAR.
I think I recall that's probably one of the main meetings I was in different places. Could you include that in the timeline, actually? Just for the public to have as well as a link to the meeting in the minutes?
Sure. Yeah.
Evan, if I could, just for clarification?
Sure.
Is the railroad didn't hire or pay for the study, the study was actually state money that filtered through the railroad, but the town selected PAR, so it was the town's engineer using state money that filtered through us, but we didn't have any say in the study.
Got it. Thank you.
If something has to be done for it to be, to work properly, and nothing has been done yet, it's not conducive to having a train there, why is it there?
That's not any of the language that we just said though. So if you want to have a quiet zone, right, so that there's no horns, Option C is the option. So we've already green lighted to the tune of, I think around $800,000 to redo the intersection to optimize traffic, but it does not address the horns in any way. The horn blowing would still continue at the rate that it continues now. So if you want a quiet zone, as I stated, you need to make that E Street a one-way, which it seems like everyone wants to know horn blowing, but nobody wants the one-way, so...
Excuse me, I live right there, it's right next to this railroad. Do you think horn blowing 80 times in three hours is a little excessive?
Yeah.
Do you think so?
No.
If you live, if you live 75 feet away from this train track, and they come through and blow that horn 80 times within three hours, most days it's 20 to 40 times, okay? Reason being, because they can't hook up all their cars. I understand the four horn blows at the railroads, at each road. So you have Carroll Road, you have Snow Road, you have Grafton Center, that train just blows through, they blow the horn four times and they're done. Where we live, it's 80 times because they have to keep backing up, hooking up cars, coming through the intersection again, blowing the horn four more times, four more times, backing up, maybe six, seven times they do that, all at the same time backing up traffic past Pratt's Pond, and people are sitting through three green lights. There's no lights for the train, whether they come through, whether Route 30's got a green light or our E Street's got a green light, they just come through. What's up with that? There's no regulation of when they come through this intersection? They're not delivering blood.
There is not, no.
No.
And no consideration for school thing up either.
One at a time, one at a time.
Trains always have the right of way.
Why? Because of some mumbo jumbo 100 years ago?
The Supreme Court ruled it.
Great, but it's actually going somewhere, it's not going anywhere.
What if it uses a fare carry? The street is...
It's already blocked and road.
Look guys, one at a time.
Stop! Stop the traffic.
Excuse me, folks. Hey, excuse me. Let's do, let's do one at a time, so that everybody can talk.
If you have a question, come up to the mic, okay? There'll be a mic right up here.
Okay, I got it. Colleen, is that, it's muted, you gotta just push the button on the left-hand side.
Got it?
Yeah.
Can you hear it?
Thank you.
Okay, so let me ask you about this. I live right there, I see this going on on a daily basis. I've seen all three roads blocked by this train. Waterville Street, Route 30, E Street, and Ray Street. If I'm having a heart attack, no ambulance is getting to my house. All three roads blocked on any given day, sometimes short, sometimes they don't reach Ray Street, but at least those two roads blocked. What gives you the right to use our public roads as part of your rail yard? It's what I call a blimp, when I was a kid growing up, a blimp. Do you know what a blimp was? It's 10 pounds of crap in a four-pound bag. You're trying to fit 10 pounds of crap in a postage stamp-sized area. It doesn't work, you're wrong. You can't do what you're doing to this town with all this traffic backup. Come out my house in the afternoon on a summer day when people are swearing, swearing out of their cars, saying, "What is going on with this? What's with this train? Where are you going? You got an emergency?" And tonight, 4:30, people are trying to get home from the parking lot, from the T station, people are trying to get home from work, they're trying to go to appointments, they're trying to bring their kids to school in the morning, 7:30 in the morning. My daughter's trying to take her son to school, and they're stopped for 15 minutes because you're doing the curly shuffle between the tracks, like I like to call it the curly shuffle because you're a bunch of stooges. It's crazy. It's absolutely insane that you're letting this happen. 80 horn blows. Do you know how loud a train horn is? Would you like to hear that? In the summertime, I'm sitting on my deck, I have to stop talking to anybody that's out there with me until they're done blowing their horn. E Street's got nothing to do with this. Nothing at all. Why does E Street come into play? What are you gonna do? You're gonna funnel the traffic down Prospect Street and around? Because that's what people do now. They try to avoid it, they don't know they're trapped.
Yeah, they don't know that they can't.
They try to avoid it, and then they go up Harrison Ave.
There's nowhere to go.
Then the traffic's backed up all the way up North Main Street when Sid Carter, to Bridge Street. Stop the madness, my God, what's wrong?
What's common? Can I, can I hear that? So obviously, you're under the pressure. You've heard this before. We're not, Common's not saying anything that you guys haven't heard before. But we're working to get rid of the train horns and make a quiet zone, and that's what we're working on. But this issue of the trains blocking E Street and North Main and Waterville are getting to be a real, real, obviously a real issue. So public safety ones, as Common said, if he had a heart attack, God forbid, and that train had just pulled up and sat there for 20 minutes, the ambulance has to go all the way around, or an engine company has to go all the way around to get 75 feet from the edge of the train. So I think one of the biggest issues that we have right now is your yard and the trains that go into it, and the cars that go into it, and then unbuckling of that and then moving them, shifting them back and forth, which can be resolved. It can. That's all up to Grafton Upton Railroad to resolve that issue. But we have the police chief here, we have the fire chief here, neither one of them are gonna disagree with me when I say it's a safety, it's a public safety issue. So I don't know what you guys have to do to try to resolve that situation, but it really does need to be resolved, and we have to admit, it's a public safety issue. If there was a fire, God forbid if something happened at the North Grafton Elementary School, yeah, the engine companies could go up Shrewsbury Street and down Westboro Street by, you know, Westboro Road and over there. But there'd be a delay of three to four minutes because your train was there and you're trying to couple cars and you're trying to do whatever it is. Now, maybe it's because you don't have enough, you know, sidings or whatever it is on there, or you have way too many cars. And maybe we can start off with that, we know about the train horns, we're working on that. But this issue, a public safety issue, is very, very serious, so maybe you guys can enlighten us or say, maybe you have a plan, or maybe you guys see the issue or something like that.
There are a couple of things that I can immediately speak about. There's a product called Trainfo that I know about, that they use for block crossings. I believe they just installed it in Worcester, which basically shoots a signal back to the firehouse to let them know not to go in that direction, so they can choose...
Hey, you know what? We are not gonna get anywhere if you're gonna turn this into a sideshow. Listen, and then we'll respond, okay? Just calm down.
So there is that product out there that can help with that situation. It's been very effective in several places in the country when there are safety concerns like that. The Federal Railroad Administration currently has grant money, more than we have ever had in history, that can help with crossing elimination. Things like up-and-overs, unders, very, very expensive, but there are grants out there that you can work through the state to apply for, if that's a possibility. I haven't evaluated any of this, so I can't tell you if that's a possibility. Oftentimes, when you're doing up-and-over, it's a mile approach, it has to go up and then that kind of thing. Obviously, I've not gone out, I'm not a, I'm an FRA person in the Red Crossing and Trespassing Division, I'm not a highway or railroad engineer, so they would have to come and evaluate whether, you know, applying for those funds is something that you can do to eliminate a crossing. You can apply for funds through the Chrissy Grant process to make your crossings safer. As far as the railroad switching trains, that's their business. They're taxpayers just like anyone else, and they're going to do their business like any other business in your town. And the train always has the right of way for the very reason of physics. Trains can't stop quickly. You know, I don't know, I came before and we talked about a quiet zone and the options. The fact is that the railroad is working with you is an unusual situation. Most railroads don't work with towns trying to get quiet zones because they don't want them. It's taking away a safety step, which can save lives. But the Grafton and Upton is working with you to do that. There are many reasons why the train horn or that safety issue is blown in a yard. If an engineer goes by a cut of cars, they have to do a warn so that they don't inadvertently run over someone in the yard. So there are lots of reasons why a train horn would blow, and those are all regulatory.
So, I understand the, I understand the train horn and all of that stuff and everything, and we get, it's something we're working on, okay? But what I want to know is, and I want to hear from Mr. Malinowski, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sorry. David Erther, Ty Naster. But I want to know why, a year and a half ago, we didn't have the road blocked for 20 minutes or more, and now we do. And you should be able to tell me or us or whoever here why that's happened, because a year and a half ago, it wasn't happening. And it did happen a little bit, but not for 20 to 25 minutes, and it was not a public safety issue, so, yeah.
Sure, so, and I appreciate the respect that everybody's gonna show back and forth here, because we get more out of collaboration and cooperation than we do with the finger pointing and the yelling and the making comments that aren't necessary. You know, as Norma says, is that most railroads would not even show up. They don't need to.
Yeah, right.
We've got the right of way, it is what it is, but I think your previous members that were here and everything, I'm not like that, is that I do want to have a collaborative approach. So I may not believe that, but that's okay. I think from a public safety standpoint, and, you know, I used to be a town administrator, so I always knew what my role was and when to speak, and I was always let the public safety speak of what the public safety issues are. And the horn blowing is a public safety issue, we know that that has to occur. And I'm gonna get to your question from the police and fire, we're not aware of any public safety issues that have happened? Obviously, we try to address those. As it relates to what happened two years ago versus today, our volume might have gone up 15, 20%, but that's not gonna create the timeframes that you're talking about. There may be, and I'm not aware of any time, that our train has blocked the road for 25 minutes. It just doesn't happen. Now, over a period of time, are there starts and stops, and could that happen over time? Yes, it could, when we're doing, you know, when there is some shifting of the cars that are going there. But again, our train crew, we've made a purpose of trying to get them in and out as quickly as possible. I have no idea how someone can add up 80 horn blows in a three-hour period, it just isn't feasible from what our standpoint is, especially since we reduced the horn blowing down because we combined some streets because they were close enough, that they don't have to blow it every street because they're within the same vicinity. So we did get a waiver from FRA to do that. Now, to your question is to the volume, and again, I don't believe there's anything significantly that we're doing now than we did two years ago. 10 years ago, I would agree with that, but if we go back 80 years ago, there was the heavy volume on the traffic, so it comes and goes over time. You, as the Board of Selectmen, when we brought this up in 2019, you've been fully supportive of trying to do a public-private partnership to improve the operations of the whole yard. And let's talk about those. One is that we had issues with the trains running overnight. Trains don't have any freeze in them, you have to run them overnight in the winter. If you don't, you know, and that creates emissions and everything like that, then the trains will freeze, so you have to keep them running. Or you could build a locomotive building like we did, so we can put four inside there now, or we put in auxiliary power units or hot starts in our trains, which are like portable electric boilers, so we could plug them in at night, and then that keeps everything warm, so you don't have to keep them running. So that was a concern that was brought up, again, we never had to do that, we did that as part of the collaboration with the town. From there, we have no control over when CSX delivers our cars. They generally come in between 1:00 and 2:00 a.m. in the morning. That's just when they come, it's not our control, that's when CSX does it. Our trains aren't running at them, so again, we've had some neighborhood complaints about that. The solution was, and again, this is where the Board has unanimously supported this for the last three years, is a Chrissy Grant. The Chrissy Grant is a federal grant that has been put forward and will build the third track on the main line, so CSX can drop the trains off on the third track up there, and we would have a switch to come on and off, and then not have to go into the yard as much. So number one, we're not dropping the trains off at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning from CSX and making the noise. The second is, those trains can then be dropped off during the day, and our train crews can go out there and pull the cars they need. What does that mean as it relates to your question? When that gets built, there'll be less back-and-forth switching that you have right here. There's still gonna be some, I'm never gonna say that's gonna go away, but right now, that's our only option. When the Chrissy Grant gets built, then we have the ability of feeding the yard in from the top down versus the bottom up, which is what we have for the Selectmen and others that have toured our site, and you can see it on Google, how our yard works. It's just how it works right now. I can't do anything about that until this grant comes in to pay for what's gonna be about a $6 to $8 million improvement. Now, the Board, I think you guys approved this, re-approved it back in sometime, late last year. What's happened from there is instead of us going forward with the grant ourselves, is that we've worked with the Mass DOT, and they're doing a larger Chrissy Grant that's gonna go from our location on the eastern side heading west to make other improvements on the Worcester main line. So what we did, instead of the state coming in with two Chrissy Grants, because it's a competitive process, is we're going in with one combined. So the state is part of their, call it $95 million project, they added in our $6 to $8 million project, and have incorporated that into the larger piece, that Congressman Neal and Congressman Govern are supportive of to make sure that FRA funds that. I've asked MBTA as part of this agreement is to have them do this as an early start, so that when the grant gets done, again, you've got a $100 million project, could take seven years to do, we've asked them to accelerate that and have this be the first action item that happens. It actually makes sense because they're gonna be working east to west, so you start where the most congestion is, and they're gonna be doing that for us once the grant's awarded. So that will help alleviate some of our crossing of E Street as we go down there in that area. But it's not gonna limit it, but it is the improvement that can be done. So, you know, we're all working towards this solution, and again, the railroad's been here since 1883. I know people don't like it, but we have a business to run, we're trying to do it as collaboratively as we can with the town, but we can't solve all the problems. And, you know, back to the traffic solution is that whether you have the horns or not, the town has an existing congestion issue with a three-way intersection. It just is what it is. If there's no railroad, you still have congestion during rush hour. Take the railroad out of it. To relieve the congestion by the town zone engineering, the option C by making E Street one-way allowed for, and we see the models, and it's been calculated, as to it would reduce down, I think, Level Service F for some of those, moving it up to a Level Service B or C and all those. So again, take away the railroad, you've got a way of solving your own congestion problems without the railroad. Yes, we add to it, I'm not gonna deny that. But there's multiple legs to this stool, and I think you guys, you know, as you've done and have been doing, I think are taking the right actions, it's just that there's never gonna be a perfect solution. So it's how do we collaboratively work together to the best of our ability? I know the police chief was involved with Traffic Study Committee, you guys looked at this in 2019, you had engineers on that board analyzing the whole thing, and, you know, the numbers are what they are, it's a policy decision, it's a neighborhood decision how far you want to go to make that happen. And I don't know what else to say, but that's just kind of where we are at this particular point, and, you know, again, we're trying to do what we can, but there are just some geometric issues that we can't resolve.
Couple questions, do you have an idea on that Chrissy Grant in terms of the timeline? Like even just a rough...
Sure, so it's a competitive process, the grants were put in in December 1st. I believe what we're anticipating is an award in the late spring, early summer, and then once it's awarded, then it goes into a slow process, which is all the paperwork that needs to happen, and that contractual thing could take another six months. It's got a $100 million project when that happens. I am very confident it's gonna get approved. Our application always ranked really high, it's just they always ran out of money and it was, you know, we were in a blue state when there was a red president, and we didn't get the money before. So I am very optimistic the money's gonna come. So what does that mean? By the end of 2023, I would hope everything's under contract, they do their environmental analysis, because they still have to do that, the state's gonna do it, run its contractors, an early start can be done in 2024, and then hopefully for construction in 2025? I mean, it's still a couple of years away.
No, just to give it, yeah, that's the idea.
Yeah.
And then I know it's difficult for you to come up with a number, but any idea on, let's say, a percentage that you think in terms of reduction of that back and forth if and when this might happen?
Sure.
So, you know, 25% or 50%?
Well, I'm gonna guess, and let me break it up this way, is that of the activity that occurs right now, we got 100%, okay? Let's say a third of that is the train that's just leaving Grafton and heading to Franklin. You know, that's just going back and forth, I'm gonna say that's about a third. About two-thirds is probably switching, and my guess is that that could be cut in half. And again, I'm just giving you ballpark things here, but I think we could probably get that down into a third. Now, we're gonna have to, on the top side of the track, rebuild the ladder up there so we can feed it down, and that would allow us to feed all of those tracks but for three in the engine house. And so you really, you really just have... And so you really, you really just have, and the engine house doesn't matter because that's the locomotive. You don't have to block the street for that. It's really the three storage tracks we have there, which, it's three. You know, and when we put cars on there, they have about ten cars each. So it's there, there to set. They don't move, we don't move those every day. They could sit on those tracks for a week when we do it. So I think reducing it down by a third, as I'm thinking this through, I think is a reasonable outcome for this. And again, when the train's going through the intersection, is it's just, after, the terminology I'm looking, we have to build the train when it comes in because different cars go someplace else. When the train leaves North Grafton and heads through, you know, when it's just going from point A to point B, it's blocking the intersection for a minute, minute and a half?
No, no.
Yeah. No, no. Again, let me, again, when it's going from, when it's driving straight through, not backing up, it's driving straight through. When the gate goes down and the train's going in one direction, that's less than two minutes. Now, if it has to go back and forth, that could be longer.
So you're blocking your trains when you build?
You're using that intersection as a staging area. And you've outgrown your yard. That's the problem. If your trees are put together in your yard and drove through, it would be your one minute.
So one thing, one thing that I've got to just ask you.
Sure.
I mean, that's all great, but it's going to take some time.
Yep.
But what I'd really like to ask with you is to possibly during the times of, in common, you can tell me what times they are, from eight AM to ten AM or something like that.
Some mornings, they start at seven-thirty in the morning and blow the horn.
Okay. No, 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 I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about blowing the horn. I'm talking about a public safety issue. Would it be possible for you guys to monitor that just for two weeks? And get back to the Board and give us an idea of what, you know, what the issue is or?
It's a very fair question. And my response is it doesn't matter what we tell you because karma's never going to believe it.
No, no, no.
And what I'm saying here is, taking your point, is, is, and if you want somebody to monitor it, it really might want to be a public safety department. So it's not me because karma's never going to believe me. You know? And I don't want to put work on the chief or anything like that.
We're not going to put a police officer.
No, no, I'm not saying you are, but I just don't know if it's us.
Okay. So what I'm going to suggest is that, is that we, the town, put someone down there monitoring, you know, train traffic and road blockage in times. I don't know who's going to do this, but it's probably going to be me. See, the chairman just said it is me. So it's going to be me. And I'm going to, and I've been at Commons House and I know how close he lives to the train. I'll go down there for a couple of weeks because I'm retired now, don't I? Sometimes I wonder.
It was your idea.
I know. So I'll go down there for a couple of weeks. And then I'll just monitor, you know, what's going on in the times and everything like that. And then maybe we can, you know, get in a conversation about, okay, this was this, this was that, this was this. And just to have an idea. The residents know. And they know that the horn blows and they know that the train stops and they know that the roads are blocked. And so I'll go, I'll go down and do it. And then we can have a discussion about how, about how we can resolve. I like the idea of the train goes from North Grafton to Upton, you know, and it goes through that intersection in two minutes. Twenty minutes? Yeah, that's not good. But so, so, yeah, for sure, it's the switching. And so I'll do that because she's going to make me do it. And then we'll get back together and try to come up with a resolution.
As ever knows, we have no problem having conversations. The chief comes down with issues that happen. Now you get phone calls and we try to address them when we can. Some things we can't address.
Right.
And until we have the geometrical improvements and until the Chrissy grant's done, we can't solve this until that happens.
Could I ask a question?
We have a question on the first one.
Sorry, I'm missing out on your private conversation.
Oh, no, it's not private.
I was just asking you, which is how he was going to do that. He can't actually hear you back here. Sorry about how beautiful your sweater is.
Oh, thank you. That's nice. You look good in red too. So listen, are there predictable times that you do these types of switches? Because I don't like, let's not waste, raise time to sit down there twenty-four seven. But like, do you know when you do the switches?
Yeah. So I mean, generally what happens is, and again, this is general because we don't, we're not a passenger rail line that has schedules that's thrown in there. So our crew comes, so the trains get dropped off, one, the two in the morning. Then our crew comes in.
We know very well.
And again.
You're welcome to come over.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I have no control over that except that we're trying to solve that. So when the train crew comes in the morning, is that their first activity is to go through the normal briefing, the safety briefings and all that stuff they have to do under FRA regulations. And then they do what we call building the train. Is that they, they know where the trains are. They know who needs what cars. And they're actually just stacking those cars up. That train is generally leaving the yard.
At eight AM when I take my.
Well, I mean, the train, that's a train message, just generally, generally.
Nine-thirty, ten o'clock.
All right. So by nine-thirty, ten o'clock, they've left the yard. And they're heading, you know, out to Upton, Hopedale, Milford, Bellingham and Franklin and then back depending upon the day. And then, you know, at the end of the day is when they're coming back. So usually in the middle of the day, there's no activity. It's in the morning and it's at the end of the day when they come back. Unless we have to run two trains where we have to bring additional cars up to Upton that we have to do. But that's generally what it works like and.
Can I just have a follow-up?
Sure.
The third rail? You talked about the top of the line. Where exactly is that on the map in terms of our neighborhood?
Can you pull a Google up?
Because I'm just wondering what else in this neighborhood we can.
I do not.
That's what you expect.
It's moving the problem up to me.
I'm just wondering what we can anticipate.
No, he's going to show just a Google map. And I'm just going to talk about that in a second and kind of describe what that is. So I'm just waiting for that to come up.
But can you verbalize what we can expect to anticipate?
Sure.
In terms of sound and noise and?
Sure. So number one, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, you won't hear anymore. Right? Because that's not going to happen.
Does that solve that?
That solves that problem. What you're hearing in the yard is the knuckles when they hit the trains and then the banging of the trains back and forth as they back them in there. That's what you're hearing. That's not going to happen in the yard anymore. That's going to happen on the main line. And our goal is that we want to have those trains dropped off on the main line during daylight hours. Again, that's up to CSX. But they're just dropping them off. And in essence, how that would play out is that, now it's coming up here. Looking for a map. So I'm going to geographically do this. Selkirk's to the west and Boston's to the right. And so the trains are coming from New York Selkirk. They're coming in on the Worcester Main Line. Before you get to Route 140, there's going to be a, there'll be a switch. So they'll get off the main line, the two tracks, and they'll turn into three tracks. And then there'll be another switch down near the MBTA station getting back on to two tracks. So in between hypothetically, the MBTA station and 140, you're going to have a third track. The train should be able to just pull through there. And the back portion of the train would generally be our block. Block is a group of cars. They would pull that in there, put the brakes on those cars and disconnect it. Here we go. Perp. Pardon me. So again, we've got the MBTA station here heading east. We've got Selkirk out there heading west. Sorry about that. That's all right. And we're down here. Not that tall. Here's the 140 bridge. So again, right here, we have some type of a switch come off of here, go into a third track. We have two, you'd have three tracks running through here. And then, can you pull this down so I can just reach a little more? And then that would merge back into two again. So right here is that we would then have the Y break into this third track. So this would hit here, this would hit here. So our train and then up here, we would connect it into the tracks heading in this direction. So we could feed three or four tracks in this area from the top down versus the bottom up. And that activity that I'm talking about right now would occur during predominantly daylight hours. And I could, you know, again, if it's dark at six in the, or six-thirty in the morning, it could be then. But, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at. Then at the end of the day, again, these would be full trains coming in, inbound trains. At the end of the day, we would then put the outbound trains on here so that the train that's heading out to Selkirk would just back in, pick it up and then head out. So that right there, those activities would reduce the noise, the two AM noise, and get rid of that because it's not, they're not backing anything. They're just dropping off. And then it allows us to feed the top of the yard to build the trains in this section versus from the bottom up. And the only, and then, yeah. That helps?
Just a, I think.
Wait, but we had.
Question here.
Oh, sorry.
All right. It's just like the, just a quick reminder of the history with the GRR and why you're not taking a fix there. Because you've given us so many half-truths, just outright BS. When we first heard this.
I'm sorry. I'm just not going to listen to that. It's because, no, no, no. Time out, sir.
The tracks have been there for eighty years.
Time out, sir.
But they were dormant for most of my life.
Time out, sir. I'm here, since I've been working for the railroad, I've spoken the truth. No one's ever questioned that because I have my own integrity in who I am. So, so, so hear me out is that, and the chief and others can speak to this, is I will help to solve the problem. But we have to communicate as adults.
I'm trying.
So just in general, just in.
When we first heard about the GRR reopening, I heard things like pellets for pellet stones. And people weren't favorite. No, it's a good idea because the track's running, whatever. Next thing you know, we have to get an injunction in the middle of the night because of hundred-year-old massive tanks for propane coming into town. That we've got to stop in the middle of the night that nobody ever said a word about.
No. Bullshit.
I mean, that's a fact.
It's a fact.
And nobody owns up to it.
It's a fact, but it's old news.
Right.
And we're trying, wait, hang on. We're trying here to resolve or to solve a problem. And you're going back to the propane tanks, which is wicked old.
It makes me not trust them.
It's wicked old news. And it's, and that whole thing is all over. So let's stay with what we have.
It's still an issue.
Let's stay with what we have currently, the issues that we have currently, and not go back to what happened on Snow Road forty years ago. It doesn't matter.
Forty years ago. It was twelve years ago. Right.
So just.
My question is why can't they book up the trains going in the other direction? And build some sort of loop to come back around? The other direction is wide open. It's one sleepy road.
I don't know what you're talking about. What direction?
Do you want to point on the map? Would that be helpful?
You know, I'm not great with that map, to be honest. But going in the other direction, if you want the trains to go down, you're blocking Waterville, you're blocking East, go the other way.
Is that what you're talking about? We're watching. There'll be trains on the way left side.
So is that, is that what the customer plan is?
I think that's what we've said is that with the Selectmen's support, building this new third track is that that's going to allow us to build the trains on the top of the yard, off of Westboro, tops, whatever you want to call it, that it's not going to, that's going to reduce down the crossings by hopefully a third.
So who pays for that?
So where that is right now is it's a federal grant program that the state's applied for and the federal government's going to pay for it. And the federal government, and then the state's going to actually do the work.
Okay, so next, move on.
Hi, Mr. Merrill Lienowski. I've visited you many a times already. And I'm trying to understand this Chrissy grant. You and I talked about it. What, I, I'm, I'm not one who's totally in favor of this because it puts the thirty thousand gallons in my backyard versus these guys who've actually had to deal with it. But I'm a good neighbor, so I'm all for this Chrissy grant. I'm for this third rail. I wish it was going to be happening sooner than later. I guess COVID came along and ruined it all because you and I sat there and walked those rails. And I tried to convince you to go all the way down to Westboro where it wasn't in the neighborhood because the people on Route 30 will now have thirty thousand gallons worth of propane in their backyard. But you just changed the rules where the third rail was supposed to start from here and go towards the MBTA, the Grafton rail stop. Now you're talking about the third rail is going towards the Wyman Gordon, which has a problem with that bridge. That bridge can only support two rails. So now you're talking about taking down that bridge to install a third.
Are you saying the 140 bridge?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the 140 bridge is already slated to go under reconstruction by the state.
So is that understood? I mean, one of the things.
Can I, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So 140 Bridge, it needs to be reconstructed. It has a weight limit on it right now, so it's structurally deficient. So it is in the pipeline to be replaced by MBTA. When that happens, I don't know. When it gets done, it is going to widen the area under there. So my point being is that, you know, the goal is to get that switch further west so that it can come in and then be able to work there. But until the bridge is done, and this is where the engineering comes in once they get the grant, is, is the switch going to be right at the bridge to go in there? Or is the switch going to be a little further back? Do they have the room to go under the bridge?
Right. So thank you for clarifying that. Because that, and that, another piece of the pie is, is that in order to get your third rail win, that bridge has to be reconstructed.
No, no, it does not. It, 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 it just, all that we're talking about is this bridge. Is it going to go from here to say here? Or is it going to go from here to here? And that piece, you know, depends upon this bridge as to where, is the switch going to start out here as a phase one and then move over here as a phase two? That's the piece we just don't know until they do the engineering.
So in favor of residents.
Yep.
And noise and not having thirty thousand gallons worth of propane in your backyard, let's do the bridge and you put those over on Wyman Gordon, which is an industrial park and not in my backyard.
But the propane tanks, the general?
No. Every single car is thirty thousand gallons of liquid propane.
Unprotected.
Unprotected, except for in this beautiful yard, which is beautiful and is safe and happy. We're talking about the ten to twenty to thirty cars that are not on.
Move to Wyman Gordon, that's my backyard.
So if we can get the third rail to be in the industrial area, i.e. Wyman Gordon, away from our backyards, not only do we get the third, less cars down on Route 30 and East Street, you don't have the cars sitting in people's backyards as they are today. And we fix a bridge that is insufficient from your own mouth. And we don't have to go do one, one-way on East Street.
Mike, is the, is the bridge part of the Chrissy grant that has been application?
No, the bridge is already funded under the Mass DOT tip plan. I just, I just don't follow exactly where it is. It's something to be cut into here. And again, the photo, we can move this switch, here's 140, towards Wyman Gordon. As you see, there's no neighbors. There's no neighbors in here at all.
No!
No, no, right here.
Go for it.
No, that's where we wanna be. It's just that, until the bridge is done, there's a two-phase component to it. And I can't control that until the bridge is redone. But once you have the switch in there, it can always be moved down further, which is, you know, the more you have here, the better. Because this also provides another opportunity too, for the commuter train to get off if there's an emergency too, on a third track. Because we've had the commuter rail line, when they've had to run a train through our yard to come out to Franklin, because they had some damage in some areas up in different parts.
Are you saying that's your long-term intent?
Uh, no, what I've said, well, yes. I mean, the, the, the better solution is to run this as long as you can, but you can't run it past the bridge until this is engineered.
But once the bridge is engineered, you're saying for the public record, that your intent is to move all of those cars down Wyman-
No, 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 just the third rail, that third rail piece.
Third rail.
Yeah, to make that longer, if it's down there. So that you can have that set up a little bit differently. Because then, what you would have is, and I'm gonna get a little technical here, is you could have the inbounds on this section, coming from the west, and then you could have the outbound, you know, on this section, when it comes off the wire, we could build it in both directions, so it's easy for them to pick up. It's a train movement issue that I'm trying to talk through right now.
Yeah.
But, but moving it down there is, is something that we've, you know, that's what we wanna do, we just have a bridge constraint.
So we can add to anything until that, the state does that bridge?
No. Well, again, the Chrissy Grant right now calls for a switch to be put in as part of that third rail.
But you said that-
The question is, is how long can that be? The length of that is dictated by the bridge, which needs to have the further engineering done as part of the study.
So you can't do anything until the state does-
No, we can do this phase, which'll give us the third rail. I don't know how long the third rail could be until the bridge is engineered. So the project, Chrissy, still goes forward. It's just it may not be as long as, 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 as ideal until that engineering piece is done. But the project can still go forward and solve-
Everything I've talked about.
Is that an additional grant to lengthen it? Once this one Chrissy Grant goes through and it sets the line, if you wanna go further and lengthen it, is that an additional grant?
Um, so the answer is yes and no. Is, once you've got the bridge redone, once you have the switch, and that's tied into a PTC program, which is electronic switching, to move the switch down further is not a huge cost, because you've already got it there. And building straight track is not a huge cost. It's, 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 it's easier, cheaper, than the big project. So it's an incremental cost to move that down a couple thousand feet. That, it's really just the cost of track and ties to do that at that point.
And that's all part of this, uh, Chrissy Grant application that is in current review.
Correct.
We're, we're gonna let the person with the mic, we're gonna let the person with the mic ask a question. There's someone in the background.
Sorry.
Dan, almost ninety-four North Main Street, North Grafton. I'm one of the abusers on the backyard. I think Mr. Melonowski, my wife, Paige, and Speed Dog. But, um, first, I'd like to, I'd like to thank the Select Board for having a meeting, for you showing up, for the FRA to show up. Um, just wanna kind of give people some history. We've been involved with this with, prior to propane tanks, um, after the recent derailment, um, Christmas Eve, frustrated out of my mind with the situation, went back in and looked at, reached out to Mr. Huggins at the FRA, reached out to you, my wife did, you responded very quickly. FRA responded to me and questions I had in terms of what's the process for accidents and, and, you know, derailments, that type of thing. Unfortunately, folks, if you go and you read the statutes, forty-nine CFR, twenty-five something-
I'll put you in slip.
We have, they have all the power. We have, they are Teflon, folks. I mean, and I'm not trying to be rude here, or mean. The, the rules are, they are Teflon, you know, the railroads. So, part of this process, I think, as the town, which, as Mr. Melonowski said, he didn't have to show up tonight, they can pretty much do whatever they wanna do, you know? What we have to make, resign ourselves to, which is not easy. I don't, I'm not right next to the horns, and I'm not, not, I'll get, I'm retired as well, so I don't get tied into the traffic congestion. But at this point in time, our best recourse, and again, read the rules, folks, we have no power. And as a private mainline, you know, just hook-up non-passenger railroad, they, the only thing they have to do is report is if they kill one of their employees, or they kill a contractor employees, and if they kill more than five people. Who set that rule? Four people expendable? Anyways, I'm, I digress. Our best recourse, and again, that's what this meeting is for, right, to have an open discussion, is to have, work with them. Because they do not have to work with us. That's all I gotta say.
And they don't work with us.
But they are, they are working with us.
Not a lick.
They have.
I'm sorry.
Subjectively, we've, we've heard that, that they have.
I'm sorry. This is, I'm seventy-three years old. I've been born and raised in this town. I worked forty-two years for a reputable big company. I raised four kids in this town. I played in that sandpit that you cleared over there to put up the house for the, for the train tracks. I learned how to swim in Pratt's Pond, that's where swimming lessons were. Don't tell me there weren't any creatures that lived in that gravel pit. Did the EPA sign off on you clearing that area? Do you have signage off on that? I, I have a friend that wanted to build some houses on a, on a road in Grafton, and they stopped him because of a spot in Salamander. Nobody interferes with you? Another thing, the arms, the crossing guns. Are you, you're not aware of the eighty horn blows, apparently? That was, that was a conservative number. I stopped counting at eighty that day. Do you, are you aware that the arms come down and the train don't even come through? Are you aware of that?
Why do they look at them like that?
You know?
They're expending.
Are you aware of that?
I stayed in line for over twenty minutes last week, waiting for it to get through, because the train was blocking the roadway.
You talked about your ten, twenty, you know, like that. If you, when you're running three and four engines, couldn't you just put ten cars in that thing and, and go through and just have, file up one cycle? No, but when you go back and forth, that's when you're getting up into your unbelievable, you can't get through it.
The, the other thing is, we have, you have four propane, you were in the propane business, now you've added tracks, and now you're in the train business, which was probably the, uh, the goal all along. Because what did CXX do with those cars before you came along? They never came down that train track. Where'd they go? Did they go to Worcester, and then to Rhode Island, or whatever? So you've got a business added there for, for the extra cars that you're dealing with now. I don't know how that happens, but it does, I guess. You know, so, so you just, you just keep aggravating every single town that you go through. Upton, Hopedale, all of them. All, you're in court all the time with these people. Do you even care about the residents? You live where? You live in Mendon?
That, that doesn't matter where you live.
Well, he doesn't live in town.
But we're not here to discuss where he lives, we're here-
And he says, we gotta allow them to do their business. We allow hundreds of businesses to do their business in town, but they market-
But we're not gonna be constructive, and we're not gonna be respectful. They can walk right out.
I'm, I'm not being disrespectful, I'm just telling you the truth.
But it's not coming off as respectful.
It's the truth. I am gonna lie to you that I heard eighty horn blows.
Eighty horn blows is not respectful.
I know, he, it's, it's almost as if he thinks he's lying. And that's the part that I would love to have you just come over, come to the house.
But it sounds like we're gonna have a plan that whether Ray, or Cam, or something or other will look at it and find out.
These people get the headlights in their, in their, in their windows up at Nelson Place-
Yep.
-from the trains at nighttime.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Not a question, but who's full and who, everything's half-truths with these people. That timeline's a joke. This is gonna happen in a couple of years. Nothing happens in Massachusetts in a couple of years.
Any other questions?
All grammar.
So.
Mr. Melonowski, again, is there any way, you're out there working right now at one o'clock in the morning, correct? You got a crew up there.
No, we don't, no, we don't have any crew. That CSX is dropping the trains off.
It's purely CSX.
Purely CSX. Our guys are, you know, they work seven to seven, something like that. They're out of here, seven to five, seven to six, seven to seven. Um, they're out. That's not our crew that's down there. Now, and I'm not gonna say that there may be some incident in a year or two that we need to run a special train, that could happen. But none of our trains, none of our personnel, none of our locomotives are running at one or two in the morning. It's all CSX.
I guess my question is, is there any way you could change your routine in the morning and the evening not to run up against rush hour? Is that any way possible?
No, it's, it's a fair question. Um, but when you start running trains in the dark, you raise your safety concerns. And, you know, we're a daylight operation, and we have a certain window that a train crew can only operate a locomotive, uh, from the time they click in to the time they click out, can't be more than twelve hours. Otherwise, it's called outlaw. And then the train could be, um, abandoned someplace in the middle of the line or something like that. So it's just like a truck driver, there's certain times that they have to, to move a truck. Our train crews are the same way. So, you know, that's kind of where we're stuck. I mean, I'm looking forward to, to having some objective counting of the, the trains, whatever it is. And if it's eighty, that's fine. I, I mean, it's not fine, but I don't know what it is. Um, but, you know, I, I think we're gonna get an objective view on what that is. Um, and, you know, we have a plan, and, and yes, bureaucracy takes its time, but this is an important project. This is an early start of a bigger project. This has the support of the town local government. This has the support of MBTA, Mass DOT, it's a high priority for everybody. So hopefully it will happen sooner than, than later, we can stick to those timelines. But I'm only giving you what I'm told. And, and I hope that that works out.
Can I just ask you one more question? So your four propane tanks that are there right now contain three hundred and twenty thousand gallons of propane, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And so now you've got, now you've got another thirty thousand gallons of propane in those cars that are protected, out behind a fence.
So propane is one element of our business. We move a lot more rail cars beyond here. It's one element of our business.
We're gonna have this gentleman with the mic.
So to, uh, to, to build upon the question over here, and, um, first of all, Ralph at eight-four Nelson Place. Um, in your description earlier, you talked about the, the day and the moving of the cars. So you do your safety briefing, the crew gets out there and starts to move their cars. That time varies, for whatever reason. However, the start and end times of North Grafton Elementary are predictable. Rush hour is predictable. What efforts can be taken to avoid doing that switching during those times? Because it seems like those are very small windows that can easily be worked around and help to ameliorate some of the issues that everybody is dealing with at this point.
Sure. So I mean, I'm more curious to see what the actual analysis is when it comes out and take a look at that. Um, what you're asking us to do is figure, is incur additional cost, additional overtime, re-change schedules around, re-change, uh, our employees, the travel stuff, like-
From seven to five, or seven to seven?
Yeah, yeah, no, no. But, but where I'm going with this is that any change will have an impact on something else. And, um, I don't know what those impacts are gonna be. I'm more focused on making sure we're a daylight operation, that we run, you know, the, so we, we don't have our employees shift their hours throughout the year. It's, is what it is, you know, for, for the employees to be there. Um, you know, I, 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 I'm curious to see if the data supports the delays as it relates to the elementary school and other things that, that may be being discussed. I'm not sure they're there, I'm curious what they are. And then, once we have that information, we'll have a discussion and see where it goes. But I, I don't wanna just, there's too much hypothetical, there's too much, you know, this type of stuff. It's like, let's get some data and analyze it.
It's not hypothetical setting that traffic.
I, I'm not saying that-
Many times.
Right.
So, you know, and I think many people in this room as well, as many people in town have experienced the same.
But I'm gonna go back to the basic traffic function, if I could, real quick, is that you have a three-legged intersection, with or without the train creates congestion. If you had a two-legged intersection, your traffic would, delays would go from a level service F down to a B, without the railroad. So, you know, you gotta look at that piece of it as well. Yes, when the crossing gates go down, that adds another layer of delay, and then it's gotta go through the three cycles again, versus two cycles. So that's part of this, the geometric issue that you have right there, that, yes, we're a part of, but we're not the cause of the geometric issue.
Well, do you, one of the legs on the stool?
We're, we're one of them there. I don't disagree with that.
Going off of that, um, to tell you a bully forty-five South Street. Um, I'm an elementary school teacher. Uh, dismissal and drop off usually take about twenty minutes. We have it done with science. Um, so I think that would be a good compromise, even like a starting point. Um, but also, my mind as a teacher these days goes crazy in terms of where, I'm Alice-trained for like active shooters. And we're trained to, like, combat for, they're, they hope that emergency response happens within thirty, sorry, one to three minutes. Um, but if they, the police vehicles have to be rerouted, like, you gotta think these things through with an elementary school near. That's all I have to say. Sorry.
So, so, you know, I look at this as, it's been a great meeting. Um, there, there are people in this room that go, it goes back, it goes back on this, on this issue many or any many years. I can assure you that this board and future boards will continue to try to resolve these issues. Now, we're not gonna stop the train. We're never gonna shut down the train, and I know a lot of people want that. But that's never gonna happen. But if we can work, that this board, town administrator, assistant town administrator, can work with G and you, and they're here tonight, and that's great. If we can work with them to resolve some of these issues, that's what the goal is. I know that's what my goal is, and I know that's what the members of this board goal is, um, to, to resolve some of these issues. Common, I don't want you to hear a horn. And I'm gonna work, and I told you that. And I'm gonna work to-
The horn is a real aggravation.
I understand, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we're gonna work on all of that stuff. We're gonna work on the delays, if there are delays, which, depending on what they are, and, and, you know, the delays and the public safety issue, and we're gonna continue to work on that. We're not gonna let this go and just drop it off to the sidelines. We're, we're gonna work on this. And you got, I'm not chinning, you, you, not yet. But, but, uh, you guys know, you can get ahold of any one of us. And Common, you and I have talked many times, and, and with, with the issues. But we're gonna continue to work on this stuff. I, I assure you, we are. So, I like-
Well, Ray, that's assuring, but I think what you need to know as Selectman is, we're not gonna let you off the hook.
I know.
We're gonna hold you accountable.
I know.
Just like we're holding him accountable. He's already said that you all support all of his efforts, so we ultimately will hold you all accountable. I think that's, no, let me have my piece. That's, I think, what each of you need to know.
That's why we got elected. Because if we got elected to not be responsible to the residents of this town, then we got elected for the wrong reason.
Well, many have done that, but let me ask about, let me ask though, about something though, about communication, because there was a derailment. Was that CSX or you? And I learned about it from the Grafton Police Facebook page, thank you, Chief. Um, but did you, I heard through the grapevine that you were notified late in that endeavor. Can you shed some light on that? Because I think as residents, we haven't heard enough about that derailment on purpose.
Yeah. Um, so, um, it happened at 1:22 AM, so it wasn't us, it was CSX. Uh, it was Christmas Eve. Um, in essence, what happened is we had a loaded track of outbound empty, um, rail cars going out. Um, I think maybe twenty-five cars. Um, CSX backed in with a train that had seventy-three cars on it, seventy-two cars. They made the hitch, they stopped, and then you're supposed, and then the brakes power up. Um, for whatever reason, um, the train drifted backwards, uh, for more than a car length. What we have is, because that's on a hill, you have what's called derails. Derails are metal contraptions, best word for a contraption, you hook on the rail, that if a, a rail car, the wheels, the two wheels, they're called a truck. So a rail car has two trucks, a truck on each end. And if the truck hits a derail, it goes off the rail and goes into the gravel and the ties. So when CSX was there, the train drifted back while they were, I, I, I don't wanna speak for CSX what happened, but it drifted back, it shouldn't have. And that last rail car, the truck, hit the derail and went off the track. CSX then pulled the train out. The front truck stayed on the track it was posed to. The track that was dragging through the gravel hit a switch and decided it was gonna take another rail, uh, rail line. So now you have a truck and a truck on two different rail lines going diagonal. That rail car, again, going slow, a couple miles an hour, as it was going up the hill, it hit a, a parked rail car, 'cause it had nowhere to go, and that made it roll over. So it was like a domino effect, it was slow motion, and then they had the rail cars roll over on their side. And, uh, at that point, CSX found out what the issue was. When that occurred, there was an immediate response. Um, when CSX found out what happened, they went through their emergency response items. Uh, I know our general manager, John Dewali, was on the site within a few minutes. I know the police were on the site right away, uh, as well as fire, um, went through and did an inspection of the tanks. They had CSX personnel, I don't wanna say fly-in, but they literally were driving so fast, they could've been flying- but they literally were driving so fast they could have been flying in, to do an inspection of the tanks. There was no leakage of any of the tanks. They were dinged up, banged up. But a propane tank is two tanks. It's an inner core tank with, I think, about three-quarter inch steel. And then foam around that, and then an outer quarter inch steel wrapping the whole thing in. They're designed that if they're going eighty miles an hour, to flip over and nothing would happen to them. Here, they were going a mile or two mile an hour. I don't know what exactly they were going. And they just rolled on its side and went there. So public safety was on scene right away. Did what they needed to do, did the inspection, did the hazmat team was there right away, doing an inspection. And again, there were no safety concerns, not going to wood, no one was hurt. From there, I got there, I don't know, five o'clock in the morning or something like that. And we then, at that point, you know, went through and made sure that all the appropriate people that weren't in the emergency response items, as the first responders were notified. So the first responders did what they needed to do. They were there to protect public safety. They did their inspection, it was good. And then we went through our second line, and I think emailed Evan and the board, or you, and then you let the board know, probably around seven o'clock that morning. I'm sure you'd already heard it from the chief, but I wanted to make sure everybody else knew about that. So, that's what happened. You know, it's an unfortunate accident. CSX made a mistake. And all the equipment that was there functioned properly. But they rolled cars on its side within twenty-four hours. I think we had six cranes. Cranes are the bulldozers with the arches on them. And they uprighted all the railcars. They were put back on their trucks and sat on the tracks. Our rail yard looked like spaghetti because it was dragging some of the stuff through, and the track just bends, so we had to come back and rebuild the track. Those railcars are going to end up being scrapped. Just because it's, 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 once they've been through, even though they only just basically fell over, they're going to end up being scrapped that's down there. So, again, public safety did everything they were supposed to do. We did everything we were supposed to do. It was Christmas Eve, there wasn't much press that was out there. I think the main source of news in any town is generally the police Facebook page. And they got stuff out there in fire Facebook page.
And it was properly reported to the National Response Center?
Yep, yeah. So I mean, all the protocol was done. And again, fortunately, there's no wood here, wood up there. No accidents, no one got, I mean, there wasn't accident, no one got hurt. And there were no safety issues that were there. And the response, everything worked as it should have.
I have a question on that. How did, sorry. I just want to see the real way. So it's eight fifteen right now, we have a hard stop at eight thirty. The library's going to close, so I just want everyone to be aware that we're going to be wrapping this up in about ten or fifteen minutes. So, question on, how was public safety notified? Was, did CSX?
CSX made the call, I believe. Was it CSX that made the call?
Yeah.
Yeah, it all happened together with a CSX or John Dewali made the call.
I guess my question is, there was a call made to public safety?
Yes, yes.
At one thirty or four o'clock?
It's like one thirty, I think.
Yes, it was one thirty. I can tell you, just because we woke up, heard the big bang, I mean, woke up everybody in our house. And my concern is that...
Wait, that's the, that was my question. It's not so much when it happened, when the incident occurred, but I'm just curious when.
So, so, from my perspective, I mean, the concern is that something that big, and we could witness the derailment, that, I mean, it just seems to me that the neighbors or somebody, I mean, that we should just be at least alerted that everything's okay.
Like a reverse, not one word.
You know, that it's being taken care of. And I just wonder why we have to...
Yeah, so I don't think that necessarily is a railroad issue. I think that's an us issue. So we have code red, we can do a reverse I-1. And what we should be doing is building out a catchment around the site so that if we have to put out a notice that there's been a derailment or something smaller, we can notify just the people in the immediate area that there's been an issue, but there's no immediate threat. No need to panic. We've done a very good job of building our system to be able to do mass notifications of the entire town. But we probably need to do a better job of pinpointing that so that when we get a call at one thirty in the morning, we have a procedure to make that go out.
So I think if we can just, you know, focus on that with the butters, and that becomes part of the protocol that's down there, that, you know, after public safety's done, however you guys want to release that, I think that we want to make sure the neighbors are aware of what's happening. And when you email me or call me, we get back to you as soon as I had a contact on that particular issue. But I think, you know, we've talked today, as a matter of fact, just how to, we can improve that going forward.
And that timeline, that timeline's helpful, but actually on your Grafton Facebook page, Chief, it says that at or about four AM, you were notified.
Actually, that was on the fire department.
Well, it says Grafton Police Department, Massachusetts.
Well, no, it was a copy from the fire department.
Oh, you copied it, okay. So... That's my concern. I'm not sure if there's a notification straight away.
They were the original responders, so.
But it reads like it's your original post. So, there's a disconnect between the one thirty and the four AM.
Yeah, I will, so, just one minute. So, we can go back and look at the log, and we can do all of those things. I think that it's a little unfair for, Mike is saying at time, the chiefs pushed it out. I'm sure that, I'm not even sure each of the chiefs pushed it out or if their employees did. So we can look at that, but I wouldn't want to lay blame on...
I'm not holding you...
No, I know, I'm just saying, just in general. Let's figure out, let's figure out how that, we can get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, the beauty is, you're going to have a record of when that call came in, so we'll figure it out.
Right, exactly.
Making that safe, them calling, public safety. Of course. If you need to. But if you're in a butter, you want to be, I don't want a person to see to read on Facebook. I've worked in this industry for twenty years, I get it. Yeah.
So, so...
So there's a question about...
Go ahead. Chris Ellison, Forty-One Waterville Street. First time caller, but we can listen. Welcome. You had mentioned earlier, I missed the whole part of it, that there was an issue last year where the trains were on basically all night and shaking our windows and stuff like that. You had mentioned you've done something to fix that. Does that mean that we're not going to run into that anymore? Whatever you've done will counteract that moving forward?
Yeah, so for the last three years, we've had the locomotive built with the Hot Start program, so they weren't running. This is our normal day-to-day locomotive. What you're speaking to specifically is that there's exceptions to everything, okay? So I'm just going to say that upfront. The exception was, we were doing some testing on an upgrade to a locomotive. It needed to run for like three or four days straight. That's what that issue was that was running there. And again, I may be off on my number of days there, but there was a testing procedure for a locomotive that was not normal. That was a one-off because of a testing protocol and an emissions protocol that you had to run. But again, our locomotives are all on, we built the Hot Starts into all of them, and they go into the buildings.
One more quick question, not to Mike, but to us. Because when this was approved, we were supposed to have a fire safety analysis done every five years according to the state fire marshal. That was supposed to be executed in 2020. When I spoke with the state fire marshal, oh, COVID. We couldn't get to it. Has it been executed between 2019 and 2023? And has that been made public? The also, secondary agreement, since we're talking about Flint Pond and things falling over in his yard, we were supposed to be doing an EPA check on Flint Pond in the water for North Grafton that gets fed from Flint Pond so that we know as residents that our water's safe. And this was supposed to be done annually. That was an agreement that I had with Tim before you were around and between the fire chief that was not here anymore. We have a new one. There were agreements that we were supposed to execute on an annual basis and made public to everyone on our website.
Yeah, so I have a little history on that. I believe Tim, I think it's part of your normal protocol to do the testing on the pond, so I think you guys get the results. They just may need to hear them, but I think that's still going on. As it relates to the fire testing,